Call the caucus meeting of the Florence City Council to order. First item is discussion of a consideration of a resolution, R 24036A, of the Boone County Planning Commission relating to the adoption of the zoning text amendments to the Boone County planning, Boone County zoning regulations applicable to the Boone County Fiscal Court and legislative bodies for the city of Florence, Walton, and the city of Union as members of Boone County Kentucky Planning Unit, and recommending that these zoning text amendments be considered for enactment to regulate and define solar energy systems and battery storage facilities, and identify zoning districts where such uses are allowed as authorized uses within the Boone County Planning Unit for Boone County Kentucky. The text amendments to the Boone County zoning regulations being Article 40, Section 4000, Article 5, Section 505.1, Article 5, Section 505.2, Article 5, Section 505.3, Article 5, Section 505.4, Article 5, Section 505.5, Article 31, Section 3117, and Article 31, Section 3118, subject to the recommended terms and provisions set forth in these recommended zoning text amendments, and set forth in the Technical Design Review Committee report in providing this resolution as a recommendation to be forwarded to the Boone County Fiscal Court in cities comprising the Boone County Planning Unit for consideration by their legislative bodies. So that was a long-winded introduction. Todd Morgan is going to do a presentation for us.
Yes, so this is just going to be a quick overview of the regulations because the regulations are rather lengthy. So the first part is solar energy systems. These are the zoning text amendments that would be made to the zoning regulations. So just a quick overview, the first part of this is solar energy systems rooftops whether or not they're in residential zones or other zones. The draft code allows them in all zoning districts as an accessory use. These are some of the key requirements. First, rooftop solar panels shall not be visible from streets when located in commercial, office, industrial, public facilities, airport, and Florence Main Street zoning districts. Secondly, rooftop solar panels shall not be visible from adjoining properties when located in commercial, office, public facilities, and Florence Main Street zoning districts. Going to skip over some, but again, these are all in the code. Number four, rooftop solar panels on flat roofs shall not be visible when located in a residential zone. Number five, shall be positioned on pitch roofs so they don't extend above or beyond any ridge, hip, valley, or eve in all zoning districts, in all other zoning districts, I'm sorry. Number six, associated wires and cables shall not be visible from public view or shall be concealed in conduit which is color coordinated with the subject's structure in all zoning districts. Then we get into solar energy systems integrated. So these are our systems that are integrated into the building materials. And just some highlights of that code. Draft code allows them in all zoning districts except the Florence Main Street Zone. Some of the key requirements, wires or cables should not be visible from public view or shall be concealed in conduit which is color coordinated with the subject's structure. Associated equipment cabinets, inverters, et cetera, shall first be inside the structure or attached to the side and rear of the structure on which the integrated system is proposed. Secondly, shall not be visible from public roadways. They can be screened with fencing or landscaping. Then we get into ground-mounted systems. There are two different tiers here, or I'm sorry, a couple of different tiers. The first one is a solar energy system, ground-mounted, with a footprint of less than 2,500 square feet, or no more than 10% of the roof area of the principal structure. And again, it's important to note that is the roof area. So in that case, the principal structure would need to be almost 25,000 square feet in area to allow the full 2,499 square feet of ground-mounted SES. This would be permitted Tier 1 as a, as an accessory use in industrial and airport zones only. It would be a conditional use in agricultural zones. It's important to note that any conditional use would need Florence Board of Adjustment approval. As far as some key standards for that, the footprint of an accessory ground-mounted SES shall be less than the footprint of the principal structure on the site and meet the definition above. The second part of this is the accessory use regulations limits accessory uses to side and rear yards, so in no case could it be in the front yard of a site. Some other ones, permitted heights, 10 feet maximum when the subject property adjoins a residential or agriculturally-zoned property. Secondly, 20 feet maximum when the subject property does not adjoin a residential or agriculturally-zoned property. Again, wires or cables shall not be visible from public view, and they must be buried or concealed in conduit. All fencing that was proposed would need to comply with the zoning regulations. There is a decommissioning standard. Basically, all equipment would need to be removed within six months. The Tier 2 definition is a solar energy system, ground-mounted, with a footprint between 2,500 square feet and 5 acres. The draft code does not allow this use anywhere in the city limits of Florence. Also Tier 3, a system, ground-mounted, with a footprint greater than 5 acres. The code, again, would not allow that in the city of Florence. That is the highlight. Again, I have the full code handy if someone has questions about the full code, but that was just a quick overview of the solar energy systems part of the regulations.
Anyone on council have any questions? I know Pat and Gary, you did meet, so maybe if you want to discuss what you all talked about in the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Yeah, I, this is, we've been looking at this for a while. We've met on it a couple of different times. What Todd was showing you up there in the red, those are regulations within the city of Florence. So we've added all of that to what the county permitted so that it was more specific to our community. So there were a lot of changes that we made to it to make it better for the city of Florence. Yeah, and we've been through two, well, this is the third iteration of it.
Gary, did you have anything you wanted to add? Anyone else on council have any questions?
I do.
So, I'm sorry. A discussion about the regulations, obviously, there's not going to be a site in the city of Florence that's five acres.
Right.
That's going to require or want solar panels. The placing of solar panels on homes is usually done in a recommended location in order to best collect the sun rays to provide the energy that they propose. And so, does this interfere or impact that if the placement desired is visible from the street or from the places that you're talking about?
No, we did not, they, certainly in residential zones, the panels can be visible, so that statement did not apply to residential zones. The only thing that would kick in, the panels cannot extend above any ridge, hip, or valley on the roof. But again, they can be visible, because we do realize certainly what you're saying, in order for those solar panels to be effective, the sun needs to shine on them.
And I guess another thing, just as a FYI, somebody knocked on my door today. Basically, not really representing themselves, says Duke Energy, but using the Duke name, that they were there, they wanted to know if I wanted to set up an appointment to have them come in and take a look at my electric bills. Number one, we haven't went electric where I live, we don't have Duke. But finally got to the discussion with her that there was nothing to do with Duke other than them reviewing the bill to see what your usage is, trying to set up sales calls. So I think people need to be very careful when they talk to anybody who comes knocking on their door proposing solar panels or that, using the Duke name, that it really has nothing to do with Duke Energy. And I told her I thought it was very misleading, the way they were going about having the conversation, but just to be aware that with solar panels being something that is on everybody's mind, there are people out there trying to capitalize from it.
Angie?
Hi, I did speak with Todd earlier, because I wasn't sure if I was going to make the meeting, and can you clarify what the Florence Main Street Zones consist of?
The Florence Main Street Zone is, of course, a special part of town with unique architecture, history, so it has very specific architectural requirements. And again, it applies to a lot of historic structures. So for that reason, there were some special considerations with these regulations. We did not want solar panels visible on roofs, on historic structures, also from adjoining properties. So again, that was one special area that was highly considered.
And then we also talked about those who have in-ground solar panels, that they will be grandfathered in?
Yeah, anyone who has solar panels of today that predate these regulations and does not meet these regulations would be grandfathered, because they predate code.
Is there any other discussion?
So, Ms. Chambers? When Councilmember Wingo spoke about this, she mentioned that there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of discussion about that. I have not been a part of any of that.
That's Planning and Zoning Committee.
Planning and zoning. So, of course, I'm not familiar with what's gone on in those meetings, because I'm not part of those or involved in those discussions. But the, the comment about making it better than the county, would you say that better is also more restrictive?
I, my opinion is, I, I think it's more appropriate for our community, because the county regulations are a blanket regulation for the entire county. So it could be a farm, it could be a house set on 12 acres, it could be any of those things. We're a much more urban environment, so we have to be a little more conscious of what's happening with our neighbors and being good neighbors to them. And I, it just, we felt like these were regulations that were appropriate for our community. We already have, I mean, there are some solar panels on businesses that have parapets and that kind of thing, so that you can't see them, but they are there. It's just, they followed some guidelines on keeping them kind of hidden.
Any other discussion?
I guess just to follow up on that, because planning and zoning for Florence consists of just two of the council members, I did notice that there was a recommendation that there not be a hearing, a public hearing, in reference to this. In my opinion, with the added restrictions, I propose that we have a public hearing for Florence to discuss this for the residents who are considering solar energy.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on that, the recommendations, no need for an additional public hearing, correct? So there already was a public hearing, correct?
For Boone County, but not?
No, but it's for us as well.
Okay, so, and that?
Yes, so there already was, correct? Is that, I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly, Todd.
From my understanding, correct, there was a public hearing.
There was already a public hearing.
And I don't believe there was any attendance, probably because a lot of us aren't aware of these public hearings. Just throwing that out there. I'm just saying, I've had a lot of people approach me in regards to solar. I personally am not looking into it, but that doesn't mean that my constituents aren't. So I just think that if I'm getting people reaching out about it now, I think we would have more people show to a public hearing if we request another one.
Any other comments?
I will also add that planning and zoning meetings are, you all are notified of them. We have them every other week unless we cancel one, because we don't have anything to present. It's open to the public. People do come to it. It's not just Gary and me sitting there with Todd. I mean, we do have extended discussion, the developers come to the meetings to present. So when they come here and present to you, they've come and presented to us first, but you can always attend those meetings.
And Pat, you're talking about the city's Planning and Zoning Committee meeting?
City's Planning and Zoning Committee meeting.
Which is different than the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Just to make sure we're clear, and then what are the dates and times of those meetings?
They're every second and fourth Wednesday at 9:00 AM.
As needed.
As needed, yeah.
And the?
There are times that we have to cancel.
Here at the Government Center?
Yes.
Okay.
But these are not recorded meetings? These are just, if you can attend at 9 o'clock in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
So if you work, you can't attend 9 o'clock in the morning?
Well, and then we do have the same presentation here. We have more discussion there, because the added regulator, the added, the things that are added for, specific to the city of Florence, we discuss those. I mean, we discuss the, like, the ordinance in general, and then take a look at what is happening for the city of Florence and how it applies to us, and what changes or additional, additional changes we think need to be made for the community.
Ms. Chambers?
So just to clarify, since all, after all these Florence regulations were added, was there a public hearing for city of Florence residents to attend and review this information that was communicated with the public?
The public hearing is held at the county level. The information included here that the city is recommending that we add to these regulations is not have a public hearing. We have not recommended one.
So are we able to make a, as Angie did, a motion to have a public hearing?
Well, if Angie would like to make a motion, she could make a motion, she just made a statement, so.
I'd like to make a motion for a public hearing for Florence.
Is there?
Would you say?
Yeah, she can do that. Is there a second to that motion?
I want a second.
Ms. Chambers, second. Is there any discussion with regard to having an additional public hearing with regard to the proposed zoning text amendment for the solar energy systems battery storage facilities? Is there any discussion?
If I can make a comment?
Yes.
I think that the fact that it's never been done does not mean it can't be done. It's not anything that has been a normal course of business, but if council people believe that there might be an interest in the residents of Florence attending such a hearing, I don't know that I necessarily see harm in scheduling one. So that would be my, I mean, just because we've never done it doesn't mean it can't be done.
Anyone else?
I can add that in the 24 years I've been here, I've received two calls on solar panels, ever. It's a non-issue, it truly is. Commercial districts, we've seen a little bit of uptick there, and that's mostly because there are some national health companies that are trying to go net carbon neutral by a certain year, so we're seeing an increase there. But residentially, maybe one, and one more commercial. And there is a lot more things, if you read your packet, there's a lot more parts of the record in there that talk about these regulations. It compares different communities. There's a lot of communities that just flat-out do not allow them, period. And there was no comments to the contrary on that in the public record.
So we do have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
I mean, I appreciate that.
Ms. Chambers, I mean, sorry, Ms. Cable?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's okay, no, I appreciate that. I guess maybe in the past 28 years, a lot of the residents may not be aware of the things that we're doing on city council, and more information is being proposed. So I've had at least four or five people reach out to me personally about it. So while it may not have been something that has been discussed in the past 24 years, I don't believe that it's something that isn't wanting to be discussed now.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Singing then, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wingo?
Well, I think, I'll say yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
Mr. Morgan, I just want to be clear that we, Phil, the council feels that we need an additional public hearing here. However, I just want to make sure the timeline for the adoption of these regulations, that there's no issue with regard to that. We, we can do that at our leisure, so to speak.
Yeah.
Correct? So we can get that scheduled. Very good. Next, we have a discussion for consideration of resolution R 25006A of the Boone County Planning Commission, recommending approval with conditions for request of Dual Light Sales and Service Incorporated per Greg Hoff for applicant for Mike's number 67 LLC, Mike's Car Wash Owner, for a change of concept development plan in a commercial two plan development, C2PD District for an approximate 0.97 acre area located at 8534 US 42, Florence, Kentucky, and providing for the recommendation before to the city of Florence, Florence, Kentucky. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. On screen, as always, I'm going to start with a site vicinity map. Of course, we're looking at the Mike's Car Wash site, was a former, formerly occupied by Soft Touch Car Wash. It's next to McDonald's on 42 and Harvey Quas Drive. It backs up the old Toll Road. This is a view of their site plan that was approved back in November. They added an extra storage and bypass lane. Of course, this request is all about their signage package. So this request is for really signs A and B, signs C and D were approved by the Planning Commission back in November. So sign A that we're going to be looking at is their monument sign along 42. Sign B is their directional sign on Harvey Quas Drive at their entrance. So when they originally came to the Planning Commission, they were looking for a 15-foot tall, 96-square-foot monument sign with a 39.27 square-foot electronically changeable message center. The EMC is on the top of the sign. The bottom panel is a fixed panel, Mike's Car Wash sign. A sign was also shown with a three-foot-tall brick base at that time. As far as the directional sign at Harvey Quas Drive, it was originally submitted to be five feet tall, 24 square feet in area. They reduced that through the Planning Commission process down to 10 square feet, and you can see that on screen. This sign, again, was already approved by the Planning Commission, so it's not part of this request. This is the sign on the front facade. This is the directional sign that was approved in the front parking lot, again, approved by the Planning Commission back in November. As far as topography of the site, you can see it's 850 at this corner, drops down to 830, so the topography goes to the southwest. Zoning of the property is commercial two plan development. Comprehensive plan shows the site forecasted for commercial uses, so there's no issue there. Some photos of the existing sign, that sign is six feet tall, 48 square feet in area. When we measure a monument sign on a hill like this, we take the measurement from the center of the base to the top. A view of that same sign looking towards Pleasant Valley Road on 42. Of course, this is the directional sign on Harvey Quas Drive, and that would be upsized to five feet tall and 10 square feet in area if this is approved. Again, that sign has already been constructed, again, it's not part of the request. In February, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this request. They talked about the sign shall have a two-foot-tall brick base, it was originally shown with three. The electronic message center shall meet the requirements of Section 3408.5B of the zoning regulations. That's where all the electronic message board standards can be found. I can go over them if anyone has questions about them. All electronic messages need to be held on screen for a minimum of 10 seconds. Any message on the board needs to contain no more than one still photo or three lines of text. There's not allowed to be any off-premise advertising. The property owner agrees to work with the city to resolve any lighting or glare impacts caused by the EMC, and the street number or address number needs to be on the base of the sign. And you can see at the bottom, the Planning and Zoning Committee, we did a little tweak to condition one, the new language reads, the monument sign shall be limited to 14 feet in height, and have a two-foot-tall brick base which correlates to the principal building. That's all I have on this. Be glad to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Ms. Whalen?
So in November, they had an approval from the Planning Commission for the signage package, correct?
For two of the signs. So, so signs C and D met code? So the only things we're looking at are signs A and B.
Did they submit those in November, or those brand-new?
A, I'm sorry, A and B or C and D?
You said C and D were already approved.
C and D are already approved, so they are really not, they're shown on this drawing, but they're not part of this.
So A and B were not part of the original request?
Correct. Or they were not part of the sign permit that was approved by the Planning Commission. So again, the only parts that's subject to change, the concept plan application, is letters A and B.
But I guess my question is, they opened?
Yeah.
They got approval in November, we're back in February asking for changes. Why?
Because the original concept plan limited the sign, an EMC was never approved on the monument sign, so that needs to come back through. They're also asking for a change to a larger directional sign that is permitted by code. So with the PD, they can ask for exceptions to the signed code, but that takes council approval.
So I think I hear what Ms. Wingo is saying.
But they did not do that in November.
They did not do that in November.
They didn't want it larger in November, they want it larger three months later.
Or that, that was, they wanted to get through the process in November and knowing that they were going to come back for the signage at a later date?
Yeah, they knew, they knew they needed special approval for signs A and B were going to have to come through council for those, those signs. Does that make?
I guess the question is, so the original plans, they were approved through the Board of Adjustment? They were, they were approved, site plan review?
The sign permits were, like I said, were approved by the Planning Commission in November for A and B. The original?
For C and D?
Yeah, for, I'm sorry, for C and D. I said that incorrectly. For C and D were an administrative sign permit by the Planning Commission, because they meet code.
Right. So they didn't have to have an adjustment to the signage, because it was already in code?
Correct.
So now they have to come back for A and B because it's not in code?
Because it is not?
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, it is not in compliance with code, and they are asking for special approval for A and B through the plan development process, because exceptions can be sought to code through that process.
And does that make the total signage package exceed the, is that, that the reason for the request? It exceeds the square footage the signage allowed?
It really doesn't exceed, once again, a, a electronic sign is typically not permitted. It's only allowed through a conditional use or through a special sign district or a PD, Plan Development Process. The letter B, that sign, is a little bit larger, so normally they could have asked for a variance, or they can ask for it as part of this PD process.
But the changeable message board is something that the city's always looked pretty carefully at.
Correct. Culvers has one in this area, ACE has one in this area, but yes, the city typically scrutinizes those pretty, pretty closely.
Ms. Chambers?
So, to Councilmember Whalen's point, we look at those very carefully. So, Mr. Hunt, the reason that we have these regulations on electronic message boards versus just allowing anyone to put one anywhere, what is the thought process behind that?
So typically, we're looking at conditions that we add to it. I mean, there is some, Todd is the sign expert, I'll tell you that, so anytime throughout my career, I asked for anything about a sign, I would call Todd. But specifically, what we're looking at is site distant profiles, you know, is the sign interfering with anything? Making sure the sign is not too bright at night, it's going to cause a visual distraction when you're driving down the road. Making sure there's no moving displays on it, so like playing like a movie on a sign, that's something that we look at pretty hard. And those conditions were all captured on here, right?
Correct. They were either captured by the normal sign code, which I have on screen. Again, that is a lot of information there. But there's not allowed to be any animation effects whatsoever, so no scrolling, no movement. And there's also pixel pitch requirements, if you look at letter E.
And those are important, because you don't want the sign being really pixelated, which looks very Vegas circa 1980, I guess, 1990.
The, the other thing you don't want is drivers' eyes taking off the road too long. You know, you want them concentrating on the road, not the signs. So that is specifically why condition number four was written, which is on screen. That's regarding no more than one still photo or three lines of text. Again, to keep the drivers, you know, a quick snapshot, and your eyes then go quickly back on the road.
And Ms. Wingo?
I just ask, the, the red portion of the sign doesn't change.
Correct.
It's the blue portion of the sign.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to the photo, but that is correct.
Yeah, it's the top portion of it that is the?
EMC.
Yeah.
Do we have further discussion?
I just have one question. You said there is one at Culvers. Culvers is literally right next to it, isn't it?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Culvers is up on the hill.
That's a little bit further down.
Is it? Okay. I knew it was close, I just, that's why, that's why I asked.
You got barley corns between the two.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. This, let's see, here we go. Well, we have others first, so. Is anyone on council desire recognition? Ms. Chambers?
May I have an update on when our packets will be available electronically?
We are look, we're looking into a drop box right now to be able to send them because sometimes the P and Z packets are larger, and then instead of sending multiple emails and then to make sure it's secure as well to send it. So I was hopeful that we would have them this month, but maybe April. I know maybe after next week, we can maybe do a test run, but hopefully April, I'll be able to get those to you. You're welcome.
Anyone else on council? Any department heads? Anyone in the audience desire recognition? If you, go ahead and go to the microphone.
Let me get my speech up. My name's Naomi Leepson, I live at 62 Utts Drive, and I've got a speech. Renewable energy like solar panels has come a long way since Jimmy Carter installed them on the roof of the White House. Modern solar panels are much cheaper, affordable, and efficient. The benefits are numerous. As someone with solar panels, I can tell you that the savings on electricity bills is substantial and would benefit all of us. Furthermore, solar panels positively increase property values and make purchasing homes more enticing. Passing restrictions on solar panels makes little sense in this day and age as they are the future of energy. Instant installation of the technology creates well-paid jobs that increase the overall economy of our city. The state of California actually requires solar panels on all new buildings, all new buildings, and is very reliable and makes the state more energy independent. Rather than restricting, rather than restricting access to solar panels, the city of Florence should be embracing and promoting the technology. Government buildings should be adding solar panels to bring energy costs down and save taxpayers money. And then I requested a public hearing, which we've already agreed to. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions that they want to ask me?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience desire recognition? All right, for the mayor's report, we have applications now open for the Second Annual Florence Public Works Academy. It's a seven-week hands-on training program running from June 9th to July 25th, designed to provide valuable skills and certifications in public works. Participants will gain experience in concrete work, storm sewer installation, landscaping, emergency vehicle maintenance, and more with flexible scheduling options available. The application is available on the city website, and you can contact the Public Services Department at 859-647-5416 for more information. We will host our Youth in Government Evening Program next Tuesday, March 25th, from 4:30 to 6:00. It's open to the public and is open house format, which will be held in the lower-level community rooms. Attendees can arrive anytime after 4:30 and are invited to attend the council meeting at 6:00 PM. There will be demonstrations from the Police Department, the Fire EMS Department, and Public Services Department. Join me for Coffee with the Mayor next Friday, March 28th, from 8:00 to 9:30 for an informal conversation over free coffee and light snacks. This is a great opportunity to ask questions, share ideas, and stay connected with what's happening in our city. Florence Aquatic Center memberships go on sale starting April 1st for a special preseason discount. Information is on the city's website, florence-ky.gov. The Florence Police Department will host our annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 12th, at Thomas More Stadium, home of the Florence Yalls. The kickoff begins at 10:00 AM with games, music, local vendors, and free photos with the Easter Bunny. For more information, you can contact Community Services Coordinator, Tina Benjamin, at 859-647-5425. And the city of Florence is gearing up for the Great American Cleanup on Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 to 12:00. We invite volunteers of all ages to join us in making our community cleaner and greener. Volunteers will meet at Ewing Boulevard, receive supplies, and be transported to cleanup sites with a free lunch provided at 11:45. Sign up today on the city's website or email volunteer@florence-ky.gov. And don't forget to be snapping your photos to send in for our citywide photo contest running May 1st through the 15th. We do have a need to go into a closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101(c) litigation proposed or pending against or behalf of the city. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Ms. Whalen, second by Mr. Nguyen. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will return to this room to adjourn, but we do not anticipate any further business happening tonight. Thank you all for coming.